I'd like to call this meeting of Carrollton Mayor and Council's Special Call Meeting, July 10th, 2017, to order.
Yes, he's here.
If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by...
Pastor Landrum. Pastor Landrum from the Morris Chapel Church will do the invocation, Mr. Mayor, after the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of America and to the Republic, the United States, a nation under God in the visible liberty. Please bow your heads and open up your hearts. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life, health, and strength. We ask right now that you continue to bless our mayor, the city council, the great citizens of Carrollton, and these United States. Let your presence be recognized in this meeting so that we can listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us address each other with love, respect, and restraint. We know that the business of this city is also your business. So give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Finally, dear God, help us to be the leaders and servants that this community needs and deserves so that one day we will hear you say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. You have been faithful over a few things; I will make you ruler over many." Enter into the joy of the Lord. We pray this prayer to Almighty God; let every heart say amen.
Amen.
At this time, we'll go into item number four, Citizens' Comment. If you have anything to address to the council, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address. I'll limit your comments to three minutes, and Libby, Ms. Dukes, will keep the time on it.
Hello. My name is Sarah Segal. I'm a resident at 301 Stewart Street. It's directly in the city limits. Are we ready?
Jim. Jim.
Do you want me to tilt my microphone? Okay. Can you hear me? So it is my understanding that you'll be voting on a 3% pay raise among the city employees. And I know everyone wants a pay raise, right? And I do. I know everyone would benefit from that. But I'm going to ask you just to consider a few factors while you're thinking about that. There are people on the payroll that earn around $20,000 a year and others that earn around $100,000 a year. If we offered 1% to those making above $50,000 and 3% to those making under $50,000, I think we'd be able to save the city a tremendous amount of money. And with that being said, I know the fire department has a lot of needs right now. Growth and improvement. The last ladder truck was purchased in 2008. The backup is from 1993. That means in about eight years, we're going to need new trucks. Business and population have grown, but the gear and practices at the fire department have been the same for about 20 years. Nothing's changed. No upgrades in fire protection gear such as raincoats, Mayday buttons, and waterproof radios. And there's a lack of fire retardant uniforms with rubber boots. This means that our firemen are unprotected. I know that there has... You know, I have friends who work at the fire department, so this information is public information, but it's also things I've heard. Employees are told they can't score higher than four out of five on their personal evaluations. When they do score that high, they have to reevaluate, and the scores are lowered. This seems unfair, and I believe that this practice is detrimental to the morale of any employee at any business. It seems as if there are no steps being made in compliance with the Georgia House Bill 146. Smoke removal systems have not been added to filter out known carcinogens away from stationed living areas. A proper cleaning system to remove such toxins from gear worn into fires should be in place as well. Among that, separate living areas, sleeping areas, for hopefully future female firefighters. I'm concerned at this point for the city. I feel as though we have a safety emergency upon us. Prevention and planning ahead would cost a lot less than paying for fire and rescue disaster, cancer treatment for our firemen, and impending lawsuits that are sure to come when any shortcomings in this area are going to lead to unnecessary and detrimental illness. Thank you.
Can you email that to us, all of us, if you don't mind? Thank you, I'm very interested in what you're saying.
Hello, my name is Stacy McClarty. I live at 193 Stone Gate Trail, Carrollton, Georgia. I'm a business owner inside the city limits here, and I'm also the wife of a Carrollton firefighter. I looked at the firefighter photo in the hallway of Station 21 and counted 17 out of 30 men that have left the Carrollton Fire Department since 2011. This isn't counting those who have came and gone in the six years since then. We are losing our five-to-ten-year firefighter. This is the future of our fire department. The wage is minimal. Some of the leadership is degrading, and the health insurance is great. But because it's the largest expense for the city, the first thought is to take away coverage for spouses if insurance is offered by the spouse's employer. What about children? Would they be allowed to be covered? What about taking charge and setting an example to do something on your part to accept responsibility for the problem? We have some department heads that have had several heart attacks and smoked cigarettes. People that smoke are proven to have a greater risk for heart attacks other than a non-tobacco user. The number-one cause of firefighter death is heart attack. We do not have an example to follow, yet we expect these men to ride the fire truck until they're 65 years of age and retire at the same time as an office assistant, yet there is no wellness program or physical health support. In fact, we disregard preventative measures for health and safety. We ensure upon hiring that firefighters are healthy enough to do their job, however, it stops there. You built a new gym, yet there are so many restrictions on which fire shifts can use the facility, what time they can go, how long they can stay, what they can wear, and constant heckling and degradation from leadership about using the facility. So in fact, the city employees are discouraged from using the gym and exercising. Tanner Medical Center approached Libby Duke regarding the PIC grant funding to pay for health screenings, challenges, and assessments for all city employees, yet she declined their offer. Several other businesses in the Carroll County School System took this offer instead and used the free services that were offered to you. Each year, you offer the City Health Fair. This is not mandatory; it should be. But the results from the health assessments are given directly to the city, yet no one follows up on the results or seeks out a program to help the staff. The first instinct is to punish them with health insurance removal for their families. Have you looked at Tanner? They charge their staff $75 per pay period surcharge if the employee tests positive for tobacco. They charge extra if the insurance coverage is offered at the spouse's place of employment, yet the spouse is on Tanner's policy instead. We could easily pay extra for a family policy and meet standards for health requirements. If incentives and guidance were given and financial fines were put in place, it would save the city money and motivate employees to be healthy, reducing our insurance costs. These are companies that are paid to do this for you. Firemen are tested on National Fire Protection Association or NFPA codes, yet few are followed in Carrollton. We are at risk; we have a huge city liability on our hands. Between this regard for the HB 146 Cancer Bill, preventative measures, and the amount of firemen that are well aware...
I'm sorry, your time is up, Ms. McClarty. I'm sorry.
I've heard that everybody gets a rant and rave from the podium for 20 minutes, so do I need a spot up there to finish my talk, or what? I have just two sentences.
And could you email all of us that?
I'll be glad to. I'd like to note, too, that I emailed everyone before this meeting. Only two people responded, and it was really sad that only two people have responded to the email.
Well, the reason I didn't respond is because my email was down, but now it's up, so I will respond to that.
Perfect. I feel like there's money in the budget for this type of preventative measures. If we cap salaries at $100,000, take away $1,000 a month car allowance, scale back our pay for the city manager and department heads that are statistically overpaid for our population, not hiring an $80,000-per-year marketing manager and $50,000-per-year assistant. You guys need to get in touch with what the real issues are facing our public service jobs and not be worried about department heads that save the city tons of money by skimping on my husband's safety and my family's insurance.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Becky Preston, and I live at 624 Longview Street. I attended the city council work session a few weeks ago, and it was very enlightening. During the work session, it was brought up that over 50% of the firefighters in our city have second jobs because, and I quote, "That's the only way they can make ends meet." These men work an average of 2,900 hours per year. That's 800 more hours than a traditional 40-hour work week. I cannot be the only person that finds this ridiculous. They're expected... I'm sorry. So they're expected to work more hours than the average person and still get a second job. The fact that the city managers take on it was their schedules allow for them to get a second job is a problem. These are not guys that are flipping burgers at McDonald's. They have a dangerous job, and they put their lives on the line every day for our safety. Many of these individuals are husbands and dads, and they miss quality time with their family because they're out protecting us. It's our duty as citizens to make sure that they are paid the wage they deserve. It was also brought up during the work session that an 11-year veteran of the force recently left to seek work elsewhere. The starting rate for a certified firefighter in our city is $36,000. It was mentioned this gentleman made $39,000 when he left. So over 11 years, he got a $3,000 increase. Average it out, it's $5.25 a year. Would you stay at a job where you made $5.25 a year increase over 11 years? I wouldn't. That does not cover the cost of living. The old adage of "You get what you pay for" certainly applies here. Let's pay for quality firefighters and police officers to ensure the safety of our citizens. Until the firefighters and police officers are paid a livable wage, I feel there should be a cap on department heads as well as a cap on vehicle allowances for city employees. The discussion of beautifying Bankhead was brought up. I think that's a great idea. It's not a very pretty area. But I think that there's room in the budget... You know, money in the budget that could be used wisely at other places. In regards to the firehouse at Station 22, y'all talked about purchasing a lot from the university. I did some research, and I found that in the early 2000s, the city donated over 240 acres to the university. So now, we want to purchase a lot from them for $100,000. I feel like they should be doing something to give us a little leeway in that, considering how generous we were in our donation. Also, I was wondering if the land has been appraised to see how much it's worth. And then, the other discussion was about the grading and how much it was going to cost. Just curious if we've had any bids on that and the current lot to see if it's been appraised to see how much that can offset. Thanks for your time. Hope y'all will table any discussions so you can discuss it a little bit further.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Marcel Roy. I live at 255 Catherine Court, Carrollton, Georgia, in the city limits. This is my neighbor, Sue Cumbee. She lives two doors up from me at 251 Catherine Court. I'm back here because we're still suffering from noise at night. And in the interim, Tony Richardson, is that right? He sent me the report, which I... It was a 24-page report, and I did look it over, and it recorded the same decibel of noise levels that I had since October, which were in excess of 60 dBs. And Mr. Grissard said that they were going to put sound meters in better locations, which I believe they did at Gerald's. But this morning, last night, at 11:51, it recorded... I recorded 63.4 dBs, and this morning, 60... No, last night, 62.9 dBs, and this morning, 63.4 before 7:00 a.m. I overheard a news program that cited the World Health Organization and their NNG nighttime noise guidelines. And they said for healthful sleep, neighborhoods should be at 40 dBs. And in third-world countries, because of the inability to regulate certain noises from traffic and other things, they said at the max, it should be 55. And this is third world. We don't live in the third world. We live in, you know, an industrialized nation. And I really don't understand why more is not being done to hold these companies accountable. Now, I do know I did drive by Southwire, and they've started the steel framework for their enclosure. And I spoke with the vice president there, and they know that these machines run very loudly, and they're doing something about it. But we have two other offending companies, Magna and OFS. And I was forwarded a letter that was written by Stephen Beasley, and he's trying to say that he has addressed the problem, but I don't believe that he has because we're still having sound levels to this day that can be recorded at those levels. And my recordings are in... They run in alignment with what is being recorded by the onsite company that was hired to do the recordings. And I don't know what they're going to find when they monitor... You know, they get the recordings from the monitor that was set up in Gerald's yard. But we are dealing with sleeplessness on a daily basis. And this World Health Organization has set guidelines that I don't... We aren't even meeting here. So I'd like to see something done.
I would like to thank Marcel for her thorough forensic analysis over this issue. Thank you. I would also... Oh, I thought you were leaving. I'm so sorry.
I am going to leave after this. My name is Keri Adams. I live at 415 Cedar Street. There's been a little bit of communication going around about the essentially undocumented accident report of the telephone pole that is between the edge of my yard and the yard of the house that is directly in front of the T-bone, where Stewart Street ends and Cedar Street. I think it happened last Saturday overnight. And we didn't hear anything. There was a big storm, but we woke up, and this telephone pole has been bent in half. And it's scary because a car within the last two years, I'm told from my neighbors, we just moved there, that a vehicle, a drunk driver, came through that T-bone and actually hit the house I live in before we... Before we lived there. And so, for this to happen in such a short period is really scary for me. I think there needs to be better visibility, that there's a stop sign, even though there's a house at the end of the T-bone. And I think that the mile-per-hour on Cedar Street is 35 is entirely too high. There's other residential streets in that area that are 25. Stewart Street and Cedar Street are 35. Parallel Noonan Street, behind my home, is 30 miles per hour. Bankhead is 35 miles per hour and 40 miles per hour in some places. And Park Street is 35 and 45 miles per hour. And those are major business highways. Why does our residential street have the same miles per hour as those business highways and not as other residential streets? I've quit walking my daughter to her daycare down at Stewart Street because there are so many obvious overt speeders there. It's kind of scary. So I'm just... I've already... Rory's sent some emails about it. I emailed the police department and the city. Facebook messaged them with photos of the telephone pole. But I just want to keep kind of pushing for a little bit of change in that residential area. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Gentlemen, Mark Sullivan, 104 Alabama Street. I'm the owner of Lime Biscuit Strategies. We started up about two years ago. We had the pleasure of dealing with a lot of people in City Hall, trying to get some things straightened out with our address and our waterworks. Did not meet one bad or bad-mannered person along the way. Everybody was polite. Everybody was helpful. I don't see any problem with anybody getting a raise. Beautification for the city starts with your employees. If you can't give it to them, don't worry about the trees and the grass. I'm a 20-year firefighter with the Metro Atlanta Fire Department. I would like to ask you to... For my pride to stand here and say, if you don't pay these guys good, that helps me because we've taken four or five of your best officers and firefighters over the last six months. But since I live in this zone and I work in this zone, it is of the utmost importance that you pay these guys. The reason that they're our best recruits is because they were trained with good officers and good chiefs. But those officers and those chiefs can only do so much. If you can't pay them a livable wage, they're going to go out toward Atlanta like I did. So when it comes time for that, remember all the city. But these guys in blue and the guys on the red trucks work a lot of hours and stay gone from home a lot. And if you don't pay them good, we will. But I would rather you pay them good and let them protect my house and my family. Thank you.
Is anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Mayor Hollinsworth, if I may interject right now, I would like to encourage everyone to attend our 2018 budget hearing, which normally takes place in June for next year's budget.
Okay. Seeing no one else, move ahead. Item number five, minutes. Need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve with the following changes. Actually, I would draw that motion at this agenda item, and I'll wait for the following. Number six.
Make a motion when we approve the minutes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Item number six, approval of agenda items for consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to move that we remove the mayor and council comments from the bottom of the agenda and move that to follow the citizens' comments to allow us to, as a body, respond to the comments being made and address any special projects, issues, questions that we may have at the beginning of the meeting versus the end.
I have a motion.
And that would be henceforth, carried from here moving forward.
Would that be in a resolution form, or we have to go back to make a resolution if we're going to change?
Let's ask the city attorney that.
I don't think so. It's the mayor. The mayor is the presiding officer, and so ultimately, the mayor sets the agenda for the meeting. And of course, our ordinance provides that either the mayor or councilman can request that items be put on the agenda. But I think it's ultimately the mayor's responsibility for setting the agenda. That said, the items and the order in which they appear on the agenda can always be changed by the mayor and council.
And that being said, sometimes meetings will exceed three hours. So to respond to some of the things that you just said, it would take us three hours to get to a response, and by then, you may not be with us. So that's just my thought on that.
Well, so we've got a motion.
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a second.
And is the motion to add what is Agenda Item 7 and take that up now before Agenda Item 6? Yes, sir.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So it would be, I guess, Agenda Item 5.5 or 5.1, or however you want to say it. 5.1 and a half.
I think what is now Agenda Item 6 would become Agenda Item... I'm sorry. What is now Agenda Item 7 would become Agenda Item 6, and what is now Agenda Item 6 would become Agenda Item 7.
I concur. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to the motion. If we do approve this amendment, I think that mayor and council announcements should last no more than three minutes.
Second.
And with that being said, if something comes up that requires us to speak longer than three minutes, then I say we do. I think we owe that to our people, to our constituents.
So are you taking a friendly motion from Matt to amend your motion?
If that's how it's seen and perceived, yes, sir.
So we've got two or three motions on the floor.
I think it's... I think it's absurd that we're even having to debate over such a thing.
And all I'm weighing in on is as the parliamentarian, but I think what we have is a motion to amend the motion, and that needs to be voted on first. And the amendment would be to limit the mayor and council comments to three minutes. So at the risk of getting all lawyerly on you, I think that we need to vote on the motion to amend the underlying motion first.
And I think the motion has already been made and has been seconded.
That's right.
Yes.
For the amended motion, yes. Matt, you want to restate your motion?
I'm just making an amendment to the amendment or to the motion of...
Don't we do that secondly after we vote on the first one, correct?
You first have to vote on whether to amend the motion that's on the floor. And then, if that passes, then what you will be voting on is the motion as amended. If it doesn't pass, then you'll just simply be voting on the original motion.
So if a constituent has a response to something that I state when I'm going over the comments up here, then I'll have to tell that constituent to come back, that taxpaying citizen, to come back another time. Kind of reminds me of the Wizard of Oz when they were going to see the wizard, and they kept having to go back to do different things for the wizard. So I don't like the time constraints on that. I mean, with all due respect, there's no way each of us would hold you for 30 minutes. It's always about five minutes or three minutes. Actually, it's about two or three minutes.
Mayor, pro temp. There's... You made them... You made them an amendment. I made a motion to your amendment. Three minutes, I don't think... Again, the mayor's the chair. If you need additional time, you just ask the chair for additional time. It's his discretion. But there's five of us up here. If all of us took three minutes, that's 15 minutes. I just... I think I don't...
Mr. Lane, let me say, I'm not asking for you to patronize me.
I'm not patronizing you.
I do understand that.
Okay. I know you are. I just wanted you to understand.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to amend the original motion. Two minutes? Three minutes. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand.
Now, the motion has been amended. So the motion is now to move Agenda Item 7 to Agenda Item 6 and to limit the comments to three minutes.
So back to the original motion of Mr. Byrd. With a limit of three minutes per council member per comment, we have a motion and a second on that. All in favor, please raise your hand. So it passes. So Gerald, you've got three minutes.
I would like to, at this time, thank Mike Green and Tommy Holland for quick and thorough responses from our citizens to me. Also, thank you for the demolition of more dilapidated homes, paving roads, replacing trashcans, et cetera, throughout our city for our citizens. I would like to thank Councilman Lane Wojcik and Councilman Waters for having the desire to learn more about effective leadership and to better serve our city by attending the five-day municipal training in Savannah. Thank you to Libby Duke for preparing all of our highly detailed meeting materials, down to the little peppermint... Little peppermints and pins on the inside. Thank you to Jim Triplet for his honor as top CFO in the state. This is something that we should have been applauding him on today. Of all the CFOs in the state, he made us look really good, Carrollton, that day because he was the top one in the state. Well, we and his beautiful wife, Christie, were by his side to receive the honor in Savannah, Georgia. Thank you to Peter Mahoff and Kent Johnston for continuing to involve me and the needs of our citizens in our parks, recreation, and leisure services. We are adding enhancements to Legends Park like speakers, metal picnic tables, decorative trashcans, concrete paths, shade structures, and barbecue pits, all based on complaints and issues surrounding our constituents and our taxpaying citizens. Thanks to everyone involved in our Fourth of July parade, the police and fire. Also, to Libby Duke for preparing... Also to Libby Duke for preparing our council float, to Mike Green for swift cleanup from his crew. And I would like to thank this council up here and the mayor up here because back in the early 2000s, when I was on council here, we had classic budget retreats where we went away and debated over the budget and each department head was able to tell us what they needed at that time. I voted to bring that back and we did that this year. So I thank you all for that. And thanks for everyone involved in our Stop the Violence Day, especially Wanda Glass, the Carrollton Police Department and the community, and Officer Bush and McDowell, who are, I know McDowell's here today, so thank you for that, Officer McDowell. I thank you to everyone who came out to our first Juneteenth celebration. Our community garden continues to proliferate and I encourage everyone to go by and harvest veggies for dinner for free. Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you, and to the citizens, thank you as well.
I wish to thank the city manager and all department heads when we had our work session on the budget last Thursday. Thank you for their responses. Thank you, mayor, for your questions and your digging into the budget. I really appreciate that and taking the leadership. I think we're going to pass a budget tonight that makes everybody happy and it's because of your leadership and I appreciate it.
I want to say thanks to citizens that came out and talked about the budget tonight. I will address some of the budget items in a few. I have actually spoken with the local radio station, made my comments public about that. In relation to Cedar Street, we are working on traffic calming measures. We implemented a neighborhood slow streets campaign to step up enforcement of speeders and traffic, minor traffic violations to help alleviate with that. And we are looking at infrastructure shifts. We are contracting with Georgia and West to look at doing some curbing changes along Cedar Street to help alleviate some of that. And we will continue to work towards fixing and addressing those speeders in town to maintain safe streets in our neighborhoods.
I'd just like to thank everybody that came out tonight. Your comments, they did not fall on deaf ears, rest assured. Cedar Street is, I got a lot of calls about Cedar Street in the last two weeks and they did not fall on deaf ears. The budget did not fall on deaf ears. We heard you, we acted last Thursday week in the budget hearing. I want to thank Jim and Met for showing up for the budget hearing we had. I know Rory was out of town, Gerald, I think you were out of town. We hear you and we will do our best to abide by you. And thank you very much for coming in tonight. That being done, item number six, approval of agenda items for consideration. We never got to that one. Have a motion that we approve the agenda.
Approved and amended. We did.
We did the amendment, we didn't really approve the agenda. Well, I guess I'm a little lost. I'm thinking that we still haven't approved the agenda for consideration, you know, items of it. We just moved something up. I would like to say that we combined four and five on the agenda into one item.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda and combine items four and five.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Agenda has been approved. Ms. Studdard, rezoning request. You're going to be here for a while. Don't go far.
Just through front.
Don't go far.
The first item on your agenda is a rezoning request for 401, 405, and 409 Longview Street. The applicant is Ms. Debbie Neal. The request is to rezon these properties from RM, which is residential multifamily, and R15, which is single-family residential, to C3, which is neighborhood commercial. The purpose of this request is to redevelop the 302 South Street site with a new restaurant facility, which will still be 302 South Street. However, they want to build a new building and I think they can elaborate a little bit on why they need that. The planning commission reviewed this request in June and they recommended approval of the request with the following conditions. They rec, there were two site plans presented in your packets. They recommended option two or option B, is how it's shown on the site plan, and they recommended that that would be binding as well as the proposed architectural renderings. They also recommended that any events occurring at the pavilion need to conclude by 10:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and by 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. They also, staff recommended that the applicant work with a city engineer to place the entrance, the South Street entrance closest to Maple Street at the, at a more ideal spot. We want the engineer to have an opportunity to be able to review that. And with the site plan being binding, we do need some flexibility there. We also recommended that they, the existing tree canopy be retained to the greatest extent
If we're tearing down trees, what, what does our current ordinance say in terms of replacement?
The ordinance states that, give me just one second, that if it is considered a specimen tree and that's based off of the species and basically the width of the tree, the DBH of the tree, then they have to replace that amount of DBH in kind with part of the, kind of the recompense, the tree recompense. That's how the ordinance is currently written. I know that they want to make every effort to keep and retain some of those hardwoods that are in the parking lot right now. There will be one that has to come out just because the building would be situated directly where that tree is.
Is there any questions?
I like the rendering a lot, the barn. I really like that, the barn doors and the feel of the two-tier structure, the, I guess that we call it mezzanine or balcony around the top. Is that an outdoor sort of an amphitheater there with the seating? I like that as well because I know you do a lot of concerts out there, right? Oh, wow. I think that's a lot of fun and I think it's only going to enhance the area. So I'd like to thank you for this.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Please, ma'am.
I'm Debbie Neal and I appreciate your time. I appreciate your input. I try to do everything I can to make things better and not worse. So we're at a point with 302 that we have bandaged it. We've done everything we can to save that building and it's just not feasible to keep pouring money into it. So what we want to do is build it nicer and better and incorporate it into the community. So that's where I am. And I don't want to take the trees down, but there's one that has to go, so. Y'all have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody that likes to speak against?
My name is Joy Park and I live at 422 Longview Street. I love 302. I eat there. I love Cheers. I buy my wine there. But Longview is a residential street and it needs to stay a residential street. We thought this a few years back. We did the petitions. We had a great neighborhood support and whenever it went to the planning commission, it meant nothing to them. So we did not do that this time, but I think it would be very unfair for you to think that our neighborhood would be in support of this. If this happens, my grandchildren would not, they already, we're already on a busy street. It's about like you heard about Cedar Street. The traffic on that street is ridiculous. They speed up and down on that street all the time. The speed limit means nothing. And if something like this goes in, we already have an amphitheater in Carrollton. We don't need another one. We just don't. We don't need something to this extent on a residential street. Whenever that property was bought, they knew where they were buying. And I just, I think it's very unfair to now take three lots on a residential street and turn them commercial for this purpose. My grandchildren deserve to come to Nana and Poppy's home and have a safe front yard to sit in, to play in. This is unfair and I just ask you to consider if you want this in your front yard. I shouldn't have to live in a subdivision to have a residential community. And I didn't, I didn't make the effort to come to the planning session, the zoning meeting, maybe I should have. But I do want to share with you that on my front porch, I have this sign, "This is the life." And I don't think a lot about it, but I'm where I've wanted to be for over 20 years and I've been in that home for seven and we just finished a very large renovation and addition. And I'm going to be in that home one way or the other until I'm in a box. But I had a visitor Saturday knock on my door and she, they used to live in Heritage Hills and they just moved into what we call the inner-city residential area. And she says that her only regret is that it took her so long to figure out the difference. And she asked me if I would mind if she copied my sign for everybody in her, on her little street of Carroll Street. And then she wants it to become the inner-city residential sign for everybody. That, that we have got to realize what we have in our inner-city residential neighborhood of Carrollton. And that's going to begin with y'all and with our zoning commission, that we understand that not only do we have to appreciate our Carrollton businesses, but we also need to start appreciating our residences.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
It's okay. And I just ask that you think about that and appreciate our city residences as much as we do our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for her. Did you bring a petition this time? Because I remember the last time y'all had a petition.
We did not because, again, it had no impact whatsoever on the planning commission two, three years ago. They still advised that it be, you know, that it pass. So we did not. Ms. Neal did.
But it never transpired. We, the project never transpired.
Right, because she withdrew her request.
Okay.
So we just didn't do it again.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask the city about a speed study for that street as well. Are there any, do we have any data for any speed studies that have been conducted on Longview? Met, you may know this. And if so, what are we going to do about the, if the results indeed are in agreement with what she's saying, what steps are we taking to alleviate?
I don't have any current data on that street, but I'll try to see what the city can do.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Looking at the future land use of that piece of property, it shows that it's residential commercial. I think the restaurant has been very successful in that neighborhood. I really enjoy the rendering shown here and I look forward to seeing you guys continue to strive in our community. Thanks.
I just want to say this is my ward and I hear you, but anybody on this board can tell you, I get into zoning. I've even, if someone, if there's constituents or people that have problems with zoning, they usually come see me. And I've had town hall meetings on zoning where I've had 200 people. I know Mr. Grinzer can comment on that. I mean, I take zoning very serious and I have not heard anything from anybody on Longview. And I'm sorry if there are people out there, I haven't heard anything. And also our planning zoning, they're very conservative. They don't just jump out, start rezoning stuff just because they feel like it. And I trust their expertise. They, they're very diligent. So that's why I appointed these people. They do a good job. They're cognizant of what's going on. They understand the community. They try to comply with our comprehensive plan and not vary from it. So again, I'm kind of with Mr. Wojcik. I do think this is going to be a good development for that area.
Anybody? I'd like to make a motion we approve.
Hey, Mr. Spivey.
Curtis 5B, 631 Longview Street. Are there any noise ordinances now? I can sit on my front porch and tell you what's happening in the amp and I'm over a mile away. And this is going to be less than 1,500 feet away from my house. Will there be any noise ordinance? I would think we have a 100-foot limit if you have noise in a residential area and this is going to spill immediately into our residential area.
I can address that real quick and let the mayor address it. We do have a noise ordinance on the books. The fine is $1,000 and, excuse me, $500 and up to a year in jail. So I believe that the landowner is aware of that. I have no doubt that the landowner will comply with that. And I believe, I've been told, Ms. Erica, in it, the noise has to stop at a certain time, at 10:00 a.m., is that correct or?
But what's the limit of the noise carried?
Well, again, you have a noise ordinance. I can't tell you about the.
Force it, so hey, what?
We basically, the planning commission wanted to put a limit on when they would have any sort of outdoor containment and it's going to be on like Facebook, we've got, so they could do that and then all of a sudden it's bad.
I don't see the landowner, I know sure he has bans there now.
Right.
And I don't, I mean, has that caused issues for the neighborhood?
They're facing South Street and this is going to open it up back in our direction, I'm pretty sure.
But it looks like it's going to be, still the noise will be going out.
Towards South Street.
Towards South Street. Yes, sir, Mr. Spivey, I think it will. Yeah, Maple South, the sound will be pushed out that way.
So it's going to be going.
When I put my train horn on for my doorbell, as long as I cut it off at 10:00 o'clock at night, it'll be all right. I just want to make that clear. Train horn, expect it.
I believe you do that, too. He's got a bear in his front yard, so I know he would do that.
So do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Like the motion carries 100%. Thank you very much, Ms. Neal. Ms. Studdard.
The second rezoning item on your agenda is a request to apply the multifamily redevelopment overlay to a piece of property zoned RM and a piece of property zoned R15 at 305, 309, 315, 319, 333 Foster Street, and 122 Park Lane. The planning commission reviewed this request in June and they recommended approval of the request with the following conditions. One, that the staff recommendation that, I get accused of being long-winded. That the staff recommendation that the supplemental standards for private student housing that were established earlier this spring, located in Section 2.04.25 of Unified Development Ordinance, will apply to this development. That the entrance on Park Lane be limited to fire and police emergency access only and that the property remain student housing regardless of ownership. Please note that when the applicant met with the city and the university buoyantly, that the university asked that they at least entertain the idea of the townhouses fronting Foster Street to be used also as faculty and staff housing in addition to student housing. The planning commission, that came up at the planning commission, the applicant is open to entertaining that. Should you want to move forward with this request, you will have to. Should you want to move forward with this request, you will have to basically allow a waiver from the student housing use to allow for that employee, basically rental opportunity for the townhouses only. Let's let them know if you have any questions.
I want to know, how is that determined? How do they know that a person is a student or not? Or how do they know if it's, if it's an employee?
The private student housing use that we established in the spring actually requires that these student housing complexes, if they're going to be student housing, that they enter into an affiliate agreement with the University of West Georgia. They can monitor who is living there and basically review their records to make sure that it is a student a little better than we can.
So prior to, what month was that?
I think that was May or March. March.
So prior to May, a person could just go live at, say, the Quads or wherever, and you don't have to be, or you didn't have to be a student, right?
Well-
Let's just say the, what's the one beside the river? Maybe called The Grove or something like that? Because I know an attorney who lived there.
Right. The, I will say, this, I'm not sure if any of those have that affiliate agreement with the University of West Georgia that would have that requirement in it. We added the use, prior to May, multifamily was basically viewed as just a, a single use. What we did was we took out student housing and created a new use of student housing so that we could better define it, better regulate it, and better direct where it goes. Because obviously, student housing, you want directly adjacent to the university or the campus that it's serving. So that's really what, what's changed more than anything, is we've defined it. And in order for it to be student housing, they have to have that affiliate agreement, which would limit your friend from being able to live there.
Do I have a question?
This question's for our city attorney. The affiliate agreement, or Erica, please chime in. My understanding is, is that the developer or the property manager is going to be required to enter into the affiliate agreement. Is that correct, Chuck?
That is a recommendation of the planning commission, which is that this rezoning be conditioned on the design, the supplemental design standards that are now associated with student housing. So if the mayor and council approve the planning commission's recommendation, yes, it will be a condition of the zoning.
And that's a condition of the rezoning. If a subsequent owner or property manager unilaterally elects not to sign this agreement, then they would be in violation of the zoning ordinance or the, or this zoning condition, correct?
That's correct. It, it would apply to subsequent owners, and the only way to get relief from the condition would be to apply, it essentially follows the same rezoning process. You have to apply to get relief from the condition. It has to go before the planning commission and then the mayor and council.
So a hypothetical, if a subsequent property manager, or heck, I don't know, current developer or property manager declines entering into this affiliate agreement, just says we're not entering into it, then we can fine them on a daily basis?
I, I would think that you would have several different remedies, one of which would be to cite them, yes, on a daily basis for being in violation of the zoning ordinance. Another potential remedy would be to go into court and, and seek conjunctive relief in the court to either order them to comply with the ordinance or prevent them from using the property in a way that is in violation of the ordinance. There may be other remedies, but those are the two that come to mind.
And, and what this affiliate agreement really does in practice, it basically excludes non-students from living at this complex, correct?
I, I believe that's right. Now, the affiliate agreement is really a, a product of the university. I mean, what our zoning ordinance requires is, is entering into this affiliate agreement. But we, the city, don't necessarily prepare that agreement. But I do believe that's right.
It, it, that's one of the things that it does. It also is an attempt, I think on their part, to have a little more oversight with where their students are living and, and training. And, you know, obviously, I think we both have the interest of the student's safety at heart. So I think this is, is an attempt to even further address that. But it includes everything from bus service. There's, there's some other things it includes.
In terms of completing that project, when is the slated, I know school's about to start right back up. When is the slated start time for that?
2018, 2019, 2020?
It'll be the calendar year 2019 to 2020. It operates in a calendar, or academic calendar year.
And I didn't mention this before. I think you guys are all familiar with this project. But this particular project is the one, basically, they will be taking down and removing all of the structures on the site. It's an existing student housing complex and actually reconstructing. It's an aging development, and they're going to be reconstructing new student housing on that same site.
I believe it was built in the 1980s. Is that correct? It's over 30 years old?
More comments from the council? Going forward, we will give opposing and for and against 10 minutes. Libby, can you start back on the clock? I forgot about that one a while ago. Anybody want to speak for the motion?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members, my name is Patrick Clark. I'm with St. Clair Holdings and Student Quarters, and I'm here to talk a little bit about this particular project, answer any questions that you and the council and anybody may have in the audience as well. As many of you know, we were here some time ago with a slightly different plan. And we've come back now with a, what we think is a, an even better plan. And we are fully supportive of the multifamily redevelopment overlay. And more importantly, we're supportive of the affiliate agreement and everything that the university is trying to do to retain students. Because in that context, we are deeply aligned with retaining students. So Student Quarters, just for everybody's quick information, we're an established student housing company. We operate 16 properties in, at nine universities in five states. So this is a, a core business for us. We build student, we build, purpose-built student housing. So in, in this business model, we don't build apartments, even though they kind of look like them. But they're really not because of the configuration of the bedbath parity, one bedroom for one bathroom in the, in the configuration. We are here asking, as Ms. Studdard had said, for the, to apply the overlay district onto our existing RM10 zoning for the property that exists this campus walk today. And also to apply, rezone, and apply the overlay district to four lots that we purchased a year or so ago that are zoned R15, that had some fairly poor-conditioned houses that we subsequently tore down on Foster Street. So I'll take a moment here and like to walk you through some of the things on the plan that I think are, are different from the last time and that you may find very interesting.
Can you bring it up here?
Sure.
Is it, does someone use it?
Is this the, oh, okay.
Thank you.
And as you can see here, plus in the packet of information that you have, the University of West Georgia is, is, is all here. And this is our site right here, which is where the Greek Village is as well. This is Foster Street here. Yeah, what we have done here is that we have now created a, a complex that surrounds this amenity area that we have for the students, which is the pool, the fitness center, some of the passive recreation areas, really creating a campus environment almost like it would be on the university itself, but just directly across the street. The property also has, on the, on the frontage of Foster Street, we have lined it with townhomes because we wanted to maintain a residential feel and streetscape rather than the larger buildings, the apartment-style buildings for student housing that, that encompassed the rest of the development. Each one of these entrances here along Foster Street are gated. The only entrance that's not gated is the entrance here, which is where the central leasing center would be. And that's just for access for people that are coming and going to try and do that. We've added a bike-share component right here because in all of the properties that we operate, we are pedestrian-oriented and pedestrian-centric. We, we, we want to be within, we are within walking distance of campuses. So this is really, fits within our model. We actually discourage car use. We discourage cars in general because we try to promote a different type of lifestyle and, and just a different environment really for the students. The properties that we took down were here, in this corner right here, four houses that were here. And that was, if anybody remembers them, they were in pretty, they were really in pretty poor shape. Aside from that, this is the exit off of a park that we met with the, when we talked with the housing authority, they were at the planning commission meeting. They were concerned about additional traffic going out for some of their residents. We had always anticipated that this would be for emergency life safety vehicles only, and the gate would be accessed and accessible only to those individuals. So it's, it's not an egress only for emergency purposes.
Which egress are you talking about? Right there in Ingram Homes?
Right here, yeah. Right here at the, at Park Lane. Right along here.
You know what? This further, I guess it reinforces the idea that I have to rehabilitate some of those homes in the area. Because what this project has done, when you talked about the dilapidated homes, is these projects are driving out the people who have called this place home for a long, long time. And there's no effort, we have no effort as a body up here to rehabilitate those homes and to provide additional homes for the people who once lived there. Where are they now? Where did they go?
Mm-hmm.
And that further adds to our homelessness problem in this town. And that's a period at the end of the sentence. Question, all right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's not your problem. That's our problem up here. And we need to deal with that. That's all.
Well, I think collectively, it would be everybody's problem, really.
Well, we, we could do a lot up here about that. It's our responsibility. It might be your problem, but it's our responsibility. It's everybody's responsibility to take care of everybody.
Agreed.
But we're the governing body up here. We could do something about the rehabilitation of homes and get these people a place to stay who need help, like my mom when I was a kid. You know? I'm just saying.
Any more questions for this gentleman?
I would leave any remaining time for any questions of anybody else.
We'll give you rebuttal if anybody comes back.
Thank you.
A minute rebuttal. Anybody want to speak against this, please? About 10 minutes. Don't see anybody wanting to step up. Any questions left from the council? Have a motion we approve? I believe it's what we've worked for the last year.
Is there not a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request for property on Foster Street, 122 Park Lane.
You want to change, or she also?
Yes. That's the, that's, as far as intergovernment agreement.
And the, the fact that the townhomes could be used for staff houses?
Yes.
With potential?
Potential, with the changes stated by Erica.
Second?
I have a motion in a sec.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak? I'm going to, I think everybody on this council, the mayor, know where I stand on multifamily housing. I'm not real excited about adding additional inventory. However, we did commission a study. And our study said that one thing we should do is encourage gradual redevelopment of existing multifamily inventory. And that's what these gentlemen are going to do. So thank y'all for doing it. We look forward to it. So I will be voting in favor of it. And I ask everybody else to vote in favor of it. It's what we want. This is what we've been aiming for, is redevelopment of not new footprints, but take current inventory, tear it down, and build new multifamily. So I'll be supporting this, this item.
Counsel, thank you. You know, it goes back to the idea that I have for us to distinguish the difference between multifamily and student housing. I don't think this is multifamily, especially since we're saying that families aren't allowed to stay in these apartments, just students and faculty, right? Unless that faculty has children, then they're considered a family, right? Otherwise, we're talking about roommates, not families. So this is not multifamily housing. And we need to work on the distinction of what multifamily housing is. That's all. Thank you.
Any more discussion before we vote? Here you go. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
The final item, rezoning item on your agenda is a rezoning request at 106 Foster Street. The request is a special use request to increase the allowable density from six units per acre to nine units per acre. Please note that the property is just six tenths of an acre, and so they are actually just requesting to build six units, six townhome units. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of this request with the following conditions. That the applicant provide adequate front porches to be installed on the townhomes. That the applicant use cement board siding, which is part of our ordinance now. And that the applicant abide by the stormwater management section of the UDO. There was some concern by the public, one of the members of the public, about some drainage, some existing drainage issues. And so that condition was put on there for that. The request was recommended for approval five to zero.
Erica, remind me again why we're looking at these, like the old intricate house and that yellow house right there again? Now, why, why are we looking at that?
Those are the adjacent properties to this property.
And do we know the future plans for those, are those properties for sale? I'm sorry, my attention span is over. But are those properties for sale that we're looking at?
I will say, there are some things for sale in that area. I couldn't agree more that this area is ripe for redevelopment and looking at, you know, kind of a neighborhood rehabilitation, a neighborhood-wide rehabilitation effort. It's a, the, the properties themselves are situated, situated very well. But I'm not real sure if all the adjacent properties are for sale, but there are some for sale in that neighborhood.
I've said before, I wish that we would look at a really solid rehabilitation effort for those meal homes because they're so well-built and very attractive. And other cities are doing that sort of, those sort of projects. For instance, Vine City is one. My dream for the area for Avenue's A, B, and C would be to create an alphabet city, where we take those dilapidated homes and rehabilitate them and sell them, put them back on the market again. Right now, we're just dealing with a lot of blight and abandonment.
Yeah. And there's also some opportunities for infill development in this neighborhood. So.
What was that last part?
So there's also some opportunities, opportunities for infill development in, in this area.
Infill development.
Infill, building basically on lots that, that are not already built on or that sort of thing, where the infrastructure already exists. I'm available if you have any questions.
Is there someone here liking, would like to talk in favor of this motion? You got 10 minutes?
I'm Penny Nicholson. I'm speaking on the mother up behalf of Virginia Nicholson. Okay, the, I don't care what they build, but if the city has a sewer thing at the corner that runs from 515 South Street all the way down to Foster Street, it's a drainage. Okay? When they build, it's going to run over onto my property. And I have photos when it was raining last week.
Okay, you would be talking opposed to the right?
The runoff, that's what I'm worried about.
So whose job is it to make sure? Is that the city? I mean, who, who's-
When I come to the other meeting, I was unsure what, if it was a city issue or it was the other.
That's what I want to know. Like, whose job is it to make sure that runoff doesn't run in her yard?
Well, when they submit plans, we'll look at that. We'll make them do a hydrology study, and we'll make sure that it meets the current requirements, which are much more strict when most, when most of this stuff was built.
And there is a big old sewer lid back there.
Give me your address again, please.
515 South Street.
Thank you. I mean, the address of the, where the, where this structure is located.
It's going to be right behind my house.
Okay, thank you.
Again, is there anyone here in favor that wants to talk in favor of this project? Again, is there anyone here in favor that wants to talk in favor of this project? Got ten minutes, Alan. Started when you got up.
Get up here. Where's the pointer? May I get the pointer?
And speaking of pointer, I would like to thank Libby Duke for getting that pointer at my request, because people were walking up here and pointing with their fingers. So thank you, Libby.
I think Mr. Clark owes us a pointer, by the way.
There is a ditch right here from Foster Street, and it's an existing ditch, and at the time, it's private property. But there is a 15-inch pipe that runs right here, and there is a South Street, there's a 24-inch pipe right here. If we cleared the whole piece of property, I mean, it's more than enough to clear what the, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I talked loud enough anyway. The concerns were earlier that there was, the lady's mother lived there, and there was debris floating down this ditch occasionally, right through here, and her ex-husband would keep it cleaned out. But we're actually cleaning this area up, and there will not be debris floating through there anymore. It's less than, it's like six tenths of an acre, and there's not really a hydrology studying required. However, Tim, what I've done is look at the amount of water coming through here, and there's a 24-inch pipe here which will carry more than enough, and we're gonna keep this ditch, I mean, it's gonna be, it's part of the development to keep it clean. So there's not gonna be debris coming through there.
Does the ditch actually run from, I mean, does it run from Foster to South, or South to Foster?
The ditch, there's a pipe right here, and it comes across this Foster Street. Right here's a 15-inch pipe that drops out, and there's a ditch now that runs right through there, and there's a 24-inch pipe on the South Street. I mean, it's, it's carrying the water out of there, but there's some debris, because this is a wooded site, and there's a lot of undergrowth. It's, it really is, it's a lot of undergrowth. And so, anything that falls off any trees or debris, it's coming right through that ditch, and I can see it blocking up, but that's not gonna be a problem. We're actually cleaning it up, putting riprap through there. I mean, we're, we're cleaning it up.
And you're saying that's gonna help her problem?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. They will not, the debris will be gone.
How soon can you get that done?
That's gonna be tomorrow, I hope.
Oh, good.
As soon as I get a permit, we're gonna start cleaning this up. I'm leaving all these trees right here from there over. There's some, there's some big trees there, and our original was gonna clean, clean it up, I got, well, looking at it, I said, that's not the best solution. What we decided to do was leave all this, leave all these trees. There's one tree right there, one specimen tree, that we're gonna take out, but I'm planning eight crape myrtles along the street. And crape myrtles is a good decision, I thought, because there's a power line running right through there, and we're actually putting a sidewalk down Foster Street, which there's not one now. It's up, the reason those photographs of Mr. Bird were shown, because it's, it's a blighted area. And those photographs were shown across Foster, and those are, there's some apartments there, Harmony Oaks, and it's, I promise you, this is gonna be a good development.
Yeah, I agree on Harmony Oaks, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? John, you got anything, sir?
Just that my company's being managed, I'm professionally managing, so we won't have any issues. George West Realty will be professionally managing the complex, there won't be any issues of anything undesirable going on.
Hey, John, real, real quick, can you tell me the difference? And Erica has educated me, and Chuck has educated me on this, and I'm sorry, the difference between an apartment and a townhouse, per se? What's the?
Is there?
And I know the difference between a condo, is it, and I know a condo, you get the fee simple, but is there really any difference between them?
Those townhouses touch each other. You know, they're, they're, they're party walls.
And these aren't townhomes, I want, like, I can't just go buy one of those, kinda?
No, no, these are, these will not be fee simple. Yeah. I did remodel one on Foster Street last year. I remodeled one last year and doing real well with it. So if it's, if it's worth saving, we try to save them. This, this particular lot doesn't have anything on it, never has.
And so really, this is a matter of semantics, right? They're just apartments, right?
Really, they're not touching. I mean, they're like, they're houses, and they're not touching the next.
But you pay rent on them, not a mortgage, right?
That's right, they're rental properties.
They're rentals.
They're not, they won't be for sale.
Unless you buy all of them.
Buy all of them, I guess.
That wouldn't be bad either.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I've got one question for our city attorney. We put through a, increased our fire protection due to Chief Bearden's recommendation for multifamily housing. This is town housing. Do you know if this will be underneath that same protection or not?
Yeah, and I honestly don't know. I mean, it, if townhomes are subject to the additional requirements, it would be, or I guess these are not technically townhomes because they're not, there's no shared party wall.
Just right here, four or two, a fire hydrant right down Matthews. There's a fire hydrant right here.
Yeah, I think Councilman Wojcik's question was whether they would be subject to the new FIREDco requirements that we adopted recently, and, and they would be, except that I don't know what they provide with housing of this type. Does that make sense?
Single-family homes or duplexes and those kinds of things.
Okay.
You said duplexes, correct?
Yes. I'd say about no more than two.
Chief, if you don't mind coming up just for a quick, quick second, can you briefly remind us what those protections would be? I believe it was sprinkler systems and things like that, of that nature?
That was for multifamily dwellings. The code does not apply to single-family residences or duplexes, which is two families as a maximum. There is some different codes for individually owned townhomes, which would be different from apartments.
These are going to be primarily or completely rented facilities similar to a multifamily?
As long as it's residential, then it don't matter. As long as it's single-family or a duplex.
Again, and I hate to speculate in this meeting, we need to just go back and read the ordinance, and I know this is one we hadn't run across before, but I believe it is going to apply to these because, A, they're rental, and B, they're all attached. Is that correct, Erica? They are, these are six units that are attached to one another, is that correct?
They're not.
They're not attached, then it would not apply.
I'll tell you, two are situated duplexes. If you look on your page, actually up here.
That being the case, then it will not apply.
Correct.
That, that building is two units, that building is two units, and then there's a fifth unit and a sixth unit right there, sort of attached.
Any more questions from the council? Anybody like to speak against the motion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote on this subject? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request on Foster Street.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. You all wanna do that one more time, Libby? All in favor, please raise your hand.
It's proposed.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Chuck, Resolution 08217, Energy Excise Tax.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As you probably know, and I know you were in attendance at the meeting, but the Carroll County Board of Commissioners recently adopted a resolution to impose an energy excise tax countywide, which they are allowed to do under state law, which essentially means that now the county will be collecting that money and distributing that money to the participating municipalities based on our share of local sales tax. In order to participate, we have to agree to the intergovernmental agreement as it relates to that tax. So what you have is the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into that agreement, and then a copy of the agreement itself. So the action item would be the approval of Resolution 082017.
Is there any discussion from the council on this item? It's like we really don't have much choice, either get in or get out.
Go ahead. Make a motion to approve Resolution 082017 as written.
I have a motion to approve as written, but I have a second. I'm gonna have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Number six, Bid Award, Maple Street, Presbyterian Avenue Realignment Project. Mr. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we presented this item. Mr. McMillan was kind enough to speak and express a problem related to the original design. This is the item that would eliminate the light at Alabama, Barnes, and Maple. It would make Maple Street a right turn only onto Alabama, and turns from Alabama onto Maple possible. It would eliminate any left-hand turn or direct cross-traffic flow from Maple to Barnes. This is a first step in making our downtown safer. Again, as I stated several months ago, and have stated over the years, we have had this area studied numerous times by numerous consultants with the same basic recommendations. This design was done by Georgia and West, the local engineer is John Bass. The issue to be worked out a couple of months ago was access to Mr. McMillan's building, and so what is before you is a slight change to the design. Presbyterian Avenue would be one-way from Maple down toward Bradley to the point, to the edge of Mr. McMillan's building. It would be two-way from Bradley to Mr. McMillan's building, and that would allow room for a turnaround there. Basically, all the traffic coming from Bradley toward Presbyterian Church would be going to Mr. McMillan's building. So this is a good compromise and a good design. The bids are the same that you saw last week. The low bid, we received bids from four different contractors, and the low bid is Jackson paving at $572,083 and no cents. And so we asked that you approve the construction of this project. By the way, just again, to reiterate from several months ago, we dealt with the hotel, with the bank, and with the church, and with property owners there, and have, any, any of those property owners, we have their support in writing from this, for this project. Thank you.
Tim, do you only have written, authored written, lack of a better word, authorization for those three entities, the church, the bank, and I think you named the restaurant?
Mr. Fulford.
And Mr. Fulford? Is anybody else that's gone by?
No, that's all. It went to the church session twice, which is quite a number of people.
I don't have a problem with the actual bid, but I have gotten a lot of feedback from constituents concerned about this project. A lot of people feel like that it's gonna overload South and Bradley Street coming to the square, and then if it's on a Saturday night with the AMP going on, it's gonna be blocked off, so can you tell me, when now, when Maple Street hits Alabama, is that just gonna be a stop sign, or?
Um, the, I believe the plan right now is that's a stop sign. We could add one of those flashing signals if it would make you feel better about it at those crosswalks, but it'll function like a stop sign. It'll be stop and make a right turn onto Alabama if you're coming up Maple.
But Alabama will have the right of way.
Yes, sir.
Tim, aesthetically speaking, if we do add, if we go with this plan, we add a flash or a stop sign, let's make sure it's in keeping with the character of that section of downtown, not just some basic, basic issue, you know what I mean?
Right. I mean, the whole intent, you know, we, we would like to beautify the entire downtown and the entire square. These are, these are brick crosswalks, they're not stamped, they're not painted, you know, this is a quality product. This cleans up a lot of the, the general area there. The landscaped islands around the church will be, you know, quite attractive. Again, frankly, that, and again, we've had a lot of consultants look at this thing, that intersection is the least functional in the city. It just does not work well, and this is what the experts continue to come back with.
And those look like they're speed tables, not crosswalks, right? Are they speed tables?
Tommy, can you address that? I know that has to do with the grade on the road. I kept wanting to call them raised tables, and there was a problem with that because of the road grade.
They get actual raised crosswalk in that area, but because of the downslope of the road, raised for the crosswalk, and the other side is actually a stand pass into the intersections, so it wasn't feasible to put a raised.
Oh, okay. So Maple and Barnes would be raised, and the one across Alabama, because of the taper of the road, won't be raised, but it will be brick, and it will give that feel of a pedestrian area. Is that a true statement?
One, actually, in the turning right here, I recommended it.
I see, okay.
Really, all these will plan to be basically level.
But again, they are brick, they're not like the, the, they're not the painted one like the one in Rome at Williams.
And so during an event at the AMP, will it be blocked off right at Bradley, or will people be able to make a right onto Bradley from Presbyterian?
It's likely to be blocked off.
Or will it? I don't, will they?
No.
Or they won't be able? So if you come off Maple and you go down Presbyterian, you're just, you're stuck?
No, you could, generally, if we blocked it in front of the nest, I see the owner sitting out here, if we blocked it in front of the nest, they could certainly come down Presbyterian, take a right down Bradley, and go to the parking lot.
Did I answer you right?
Uh, wait, say that one more time, I'm sorry.
It's what I understood you to say, is coming from Maple down Presbyterian, even with an event going on at the AMP, they would be able to turn and go onto Bradley?
Make a right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, so, yeah.
Tommy, can you tell me how far that crosswalk that's gonna cross Alabama Street's gonna be up from the, where the stop sign's gonna supposedly be up there? It looks like it's gonna be up around...
It moved up away from the corner with the visibility, wasn't it? I can't remember the actual, but it's basically just trying to get as far enough away so somebody would turn right at the crosswalk. What was causing us safety problems before. I don't remember the footage, if that's what you mean, as far as how far it is from the intersection. And the stop sign will be at that location, it'll actually just be the RRFs installed like that at the courthouse. It'll be the same situation there, the actual stop requirement would be before your turning right, not at the crosswalk. I mean, if someone is in the crosswalk, you have to stop, but a stop sign won't be at the crosswalk. If I understood you right.
From previous discussions, I remember it being at least a car length away, so that way, if any cars that did turn, there was at least room there for them to stop. I'd just like to say thank you to all of our city staff and the countless studies done, continuing to show the same results on how to fix this intersection. It's important to maintain safety in our downtown, pedestrian safety in our downtown, and this is a step in the right direction. It will be a bit of a change for everybody, and will take a little bit of time to get used to, but it is a positive change in the right direction.
Um, Tim, I think you addressed this with the mayor, and I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. So, if you're coming up Maple, and you're unaware that the, the square has been closed off for some event, you're gonna be, will have officers or something, I guess, that you can turn left on Alabama, even though the signs and everything?
No, certainly not, and, and the way the curbing would be would prevent that, but if we were to close the entire square, we would also consider that in the feeder streets. We would close Maple farther back, we would close Alabama farther back. Generally, it, generally, the whole square is... Generally, it, generally, the whole square is, you know, not that many events where it's all closed. It's generally Bradley and Rome that's closed off, but you would never be able to turn left on Maple. That curbing, that green triangular point there is gonna prevent that. And there wouldn't be any reason to.
So, if we're gonna block it, we're gonna close the square, so we just want.
We'll reroute traffic accordingly. They'll, we'll study and block it and rewrite it accordingly.
So, if you're gonna, you'd have to block it in North Cliff, North and South Cliff to let people turn and go around.
That absolutely would work. Or they could go over to North Cliff and turn down Alabama back toward 27.
I wanna go back to what Rory said, 'cause he makes up a good point about we need to be pedestrian friendly. Do we think this is going, this configuration, and I know y'all have addressed this and I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't remember, is gonna actually slow down the traffic coming from Alabama going towards the square?
What you've got, and it's typical of intersections that weren't designed, is you've got lights that are too close to other lights and crosswalks that are too close to other crosswalks. And so, that light at, that this would eliminate, one of the bigger problems is the left-hand turn from Alabama down Maple that currently exists. That would go away. Cars sack up, cars drive through and block the intersection going both directions at Alabama and Maple and Barnes. And so, again, this is gonna make this where, it's not a huge amount of traffic that comes up Maple, but it is enough to ball up the clockwork, as we like to say. And so, again, this has been modeled, it has been computer modeled and, again, you would, it's basically gonna function like a stop sign at Maple. You will turn right to go to the square. You will not be able to go across and frankly, the light at Alabama and 27 works very well. I know I've trained myself not to make that left on Maple. I go all the way down, past North Cliff to 27 and that, the light is not a long way and it works very well. This particular light on Friday afternoons will back traffic up all the way back to 27. So, when that goes away, that will make this function better and the square function better. Obviously, there are plans we'd like to, there are changes we'd like to make to the whole square one of these days, but we're certainly not ready to present that tonight.
Is there any citizens' comments about this in the audience tonight? And we'll give 10 minutes total max time. Anybody wanna say anything about it? I know Bobby, you've been involved with a lot of this, so.
My name is Robert McMillan, 232 Griffin Drive, and I own the property at 104 Presbyterian Avenue. And thanks to Tommy, you know, for meeting with me on a timely basis and he solved pretty much all my, all the problems that I had. So, I'm in favor of this now, so I'm on the other side. Now, there is one issue after I took it home and was looking at it, sometimes you just don't look at everything. We're getting ready to put a lot of traffic on Presbyterian Avenue and it's gonna be dumping out on Bradley Street. And there's been a problem several times. People will park, I'm talking about just almost into Presbyterian Avenue on Bradley Street, on both sides of the street, and you cannot see down Bradley or up to the square. And I think Erica mentioned it to me about, I don't know what you call them, bump outs or some kind? Go ahead.
It's just these two areas that I'm concerned about.
Um, he's absolutely correct that we probably do need to look at some of the parking that's extremely close to Presbyterian. There's a number of solutions and I don't wanna engineer it from the podium, but I mean, you could do an eyebrow to basically a bump out of the curbing to keep that area from being a parking space. That would allow for a bit of visibility. I mean, there's probably 10 options, that was just the one we discussed, but.
Buddy Hill had asked me about having that space right on the corner shortened to a compact car, and I thought we did that. Has that been done yet? I know it's in the works, okay? I know that's something Kenny Rollins is working on is to shorten that space.
That's pretty much all I have to say on this, so I'm for it at this point and thanks everybody for working with me.
Is there anybody else? Hearing none. Any more questions from the council? I know it's probably the best thing to do, but it's, it just doesn't feel right to me, I'm sorry. I just, I mean, I really just think we're gonna overload South Street coming up from the college area and Bradley Street's gonna turn into a nightmare. Gerald, you've got a business down there, what do you think?
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, I've said before that probably every day I'm almost in a head-on collision right there at the apex of those two. I guess the word would be apex. Well, those two, where the really deep curb is right by the, um, by the Sunday school rooms of the Presbyterian church, especially when there's a concert, people park on both sides of the street. And when I'm going home, I always, I mean, without a doubt, I meet another car head-on and we both have to figure out what to do. We're both backing out at the same time and then there's cars backed up behind that car and then there's cars backed up behind me and we just, there's a lot of bottleneck issues right there. So, I don't, I'm not an engineer at all, so I don't know what the solution is.
Well, you're not gonna have to go back up to Maple Street, go home, you're gonna have to find your new route.
Yep. And I might have to come by City Hall to go home, but, um, I think this is a catch-22. I'm like you, I don't, I might just have to trust the engineering behind this and in good faith, vote in favor of it.
And you know, Walt, I hear what you're saying and I know you've built a lot of things, you've got a lot of background in construction, but something you'll hear me say a lot is that traffic is not intuitively obvious. I'm not a traffic engineer. Tommy's our staff traffic engineer among other things and we, and we paid some very bright people to design this and they modeled it and they looked at all those things. And so, I, you know, it's not my design, but at some point, you gotta trust your professionals.
I realize that. I've driven, ever since we've got this on the table, I've come through the square on purpose and driven all the way down to 27, made the left, turned right on Maple. I just think we're gonna get a lot of people turning on the middle of the square coming down Bradley to just avoid all this going down South Street. I just really think we're gonna eventually just wear out Bradley and South personally.
I have a question, I'm gonna get a chance to stand up. My name is Brandon Dotson, I live on Rome Street at YQ. I go across the square a lot. My question is, when you come up Alabama and Maple, and you turn right and you wanna park on the square, if you have to wait on somebody else, you're still gonna bottleneck that traffic down this intersection? So, what's gonna, what's in this change gonna stop that bottleneck traffic from still blocking these intersections like it does now? Because it happens no matter. And there's nothing in this change to stop people from making that right-hand turn to park on the square. And if you have to wait on said person to back out of their spot, you're still gonna have that right hand lined up, still bottlenecking traffic down Alabama Street and still can block Maple Street like it is now. So, what's in this $600 proposal roughly that's gonna change that?
There are more changes that'll have to be done on the square one day, but they can't be done till this is done, till this light's eliminated.
I mean, that's the issue I wanted to address, because I mean, y'all put out about a $1.1 million road budget and roughly half of that's gonna go right here. And it's, looking to me, it's not gonna solve that bottlenecking issue. That's why I thought I'd just point that out.
Again, this is, this is a first step in solving all of it.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Maple Street Presbyterian Avenue realignment project as proposed.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second, Mr. Bird. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Like the motion carries. Did you vote in favor that I couldn't? Like the motion carries. This does include the bid award, yes. Item number seven, bid award, UWG substation paving, Mr. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, for a number of years, the University of West Georgia has encumbered end-of-year funds with the city. The way their funding is structured, if they don't spend their money by the end of their fiscal year, they will lose it. And they are trying to be responsible with that money and so, they encumber it with the city through an intergovernmental agreement. And then, the city is able to handle bids for them. The city charges a 5% fee for that. And so, they have asked that we handle a set of bids that they took to pave a parking lot where the old substation was. And again, they took the bids, but they comply with our bidding requirements and bear with me while I get on the right page. They submitted bids from five different contractors, they received three bids and the low bid for this project was $161,000. Again, this is not city money, this is university money. It will pass through the city accounts and we will mark up the charge by 5%. The low bidder was Carl Owens Construction. He is a contractor that we know well, a local contractor, and we recommend that you award this contract to Carl Owens in the amount of $161,000. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the bid award, UWG substation paving to Carl Owens Construction.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, all opposed. None opposed. Number eight, Mr. Trippett, FYI 2017-2018 budget adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As a result of the work session regarding the FYI 18 budget that was held last Thursday of last week, as you recall, the general fund, the original submitted budget was $25,105,172. The revised general fund budget that we are presenting to you here tonight totals $24,930,321. That's a decrease of $174,851. That decrease is primarily attributable to reducing the initially requested school resource officers from two to one. Also, that was regarding the purchasing director and purchasing agent proposals. Those two combined totaled $130,000. Per your direction at the budget work session, we've combined that into one purchasing agent position totaling $55,000. And so, basically, those items there make up the 174 decrease. The water fund would decrease from $19,559,792 to $19,507,104. That's a decrease of $52,688. And the sanitation fund would decrease from $6,237,103 to $6,205,518. That's a decrease of $31,585. The small decreases in the water and the sanitation utility budgets are a result of recalculation of the administrative salary reimbursements that the utility funds make toward the general fund and also the indirect cost allocation recalculation. And that's all based on the decrease in general fund as I've just laid out. The hazmat special revenue fund would remain the same at $3,500. The hotel motel special revenue fund will remain the same at $720,000. And the drug seizure fund will remain the same at $100,000. Any questions I can answer?
Jim, just to be clear, the 3% raise is included in this budget?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Jim, I thought we instructed the marketing director and the purchasing director and the new purchasing agent buyer to be approved later by the council. Is that right or wrong?
The marketing director stayed in there, but that would be, I think, subject to your approval before filling that position, but the funding.
After we met back with the marketing people, right?
Yes, sir. And then, the, as you recall, the purchasing director was $80,000 and the purchasing agent was $50,000. And we combined that into one purchasing agent position at $55,000.
See, I didn't mark that up in my notes from the session, I'm sorry. I've had the marketing director, the purchasing director and the purchasing agent all out. Maybe I was wrong, but until it came back for approval to the board.
Explain to the public what a purchase, purchasing agent is and does, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you, Councilman Murd. Basically, a purchasing agent would be the centralized person, department focal point for procuring all purchased products and services that the city buys. All of our purchasing activities, encumbering of funds, spending of funds would cycle through that one department, that one person. And the intent of that is to maximize the cost effectiveness of city purchases, save money. That's the bottom line.
Jim.
Yes, sir.
I know that, I think everybody on the council, I know everybody on the council knows when you list these, the cost of these new employees, you're just listing the salary. But that's really not the true cost, 'cause we're paying retirement, healthcare, vacation, all that. So, for this new purchasing agent, what is the total, what we'll be really expending on this, on this job?
Probably.
$8,000 a year?
Probably $75,000 to $80,000 with benefits.
Okay, so $80,000, $75,000 a year with benefits. If we have this person for 10 years, that's $750,000 plus increasing in healthcare, pay raise, all that, probably would knock it up to $800,000 over a decade. And you think this person's gonna save us more than $800,000 over a decade?
Well, Councilman Lane, that's the intent of it. Obviously, we can't guarantee that, but that is the intent of putting not only the person, but the organization and the procedures in place to maximize purchasing function for all products, for all services that the city buys and procures. It's been shown to be effective in other organizations and places. And like I said now, you know, I think we would be derelict if we came up here and said that we could absolutely guarantee that. We can't, but that is the intent.
I'd like to just make a couple of comments. Jim, thank you so much for presenting this. We've been discussing this budget since pretty much the last time we were, last July when we approved the last budget. We met in February to discuss majority of these line items. We had great presentations by our department heads. Quality staff is extremely important and you do a good job proving that point. You really do present this material in a digestible way. Our staff at all levels is extremely important. As I mentioned in the last time we approved the budget, retaining our quality staff is of utmost importance. We did a across-the-board 3% raise last year. And well, in the discussions after that vote, we moved to a more performance-based, merit-based salary adjustment, which is presented here. It sounds like some of those aren't as fair as they should be according to some of our city, citizen comments, which is extremely disheartening to hear. That would be something that we have discussed, is looking at studying our salaries and seeing how well they align to our neighboring or sister cities to make sure that we are trying to retain our quality people at all levels, not just at entry levels, but at 10-year veterans sort of levels in our fire and police and in all other departments as well. sort of levels in our fire and police, and in all other departments as well. So thank you for presenting this. Thank you to all of our city staff that continues to do a fantastic job here. Please don't run away. We want to, we want to keep you here, and we want to pay you to do, continue to do the great job you're doing.
Councilman Lane, if you wouldn't mind, concerning the purchasing agent, again, we, we still have a lot of purchases done within this city with credit cards, and that concerns me, and it's done at a lower level. And so I would just like more scrutiny on that. It has been my experience, and I've had a lot of experience with that, that when that kind of scrutiny comes to bear, then there's a lot of savings, and it is not hard to save $80,000, $80,000 in the amount of purchases that we do. So again, that's my concern. There've been some accidental purchases with credit cards. That concerns me. I think Jim would attest to the fact that in the last 18 months, we scrutinize purchases very closely, and I would, I would defer to Jim on how much he thinks we've saved by scrutinizing those. So again, this is just an attempt to further not, not make it too burdensome on the departments, because they do a great job, and they've got to be able to function, but we would just like a closer set of eyes on how certain things are bought, and, and whether those things are necessary and being, being bought in the most efficient manner. So that's what that is about. It's one of those things that during the transition, you know, the first six months, the first year, it may not make money in the long run. Actually, I think it will in the first year, but as Jim would say, there's no guarantee, but in the long run, it certainly would save, more than save its, its cost, and that's why we put it in there.
And I would make the comment as well. We have grown tremendously in the last 10 years, even in the last five years, in the number of transactions that we process. 10 years ago, decentralized purchasing, it's been effective, it was doable, but as we grow and continue to take on new functions, additional things, probably this is going to not only become more necessary, I think it's going to become more desirable in the effectiveness. And so we're getting bigger. We're not smaller like we used to be, and so I think that would, that would be a reason for considering this.
Any more discussion?
So the mayor is saying, take the purchasing agent department, which consists of two people?
Initially proposed, it was two, and we combined it to one.
Okay, he, you're saying, take that and put it in a pot, right? Along with the marketing director, contingent upon whatever the branding group tells us we need. Is that, I mean, I'm?
I'm just the marketing person, but the branding.
Moving forward with the purchasing agent.
See, I thought at the work session, we had the purchasing director and the agent pulled out. Guess I marked mine.
You said the purchasing director and, I mean, the purchasing agent, and which director you thought was, you thought were pulled out?
I thought the marketing director was on hold until it came back to us. It was going, it was in the budget supposedly to come back to us later on. Is that right, Jim? And then I thought we had the two purchasing people pulled. We cut down to one additional resource officer to the school system, and Joel wanted two additional police officers, and we did the additional court clerk. And I couldn't remember what we did with the new codes enforcement officer. I think it was just in the mix.
We put it in the budget, but had no plan to fill it unless we had the growth that we thought may happen. You know, the, we were looking like, it looked like we were going to have a building boom this year. That really hadn't happened, and, and again, we would not fill the position unless we needed to. Actually, I had someone upstairs that was handling part of that. What I understood from the work session was, again, that the marketing director would stay in, we would not fill the position until you gentlemen made your decision based on the branding consultant, that we would cull the purchasing down to one person at $55,000, that we would cut one of those resource officers, because the school frankly only wanted a total of two, not a total of three.
Correct.
The codes would stay in but not be filled unless we have, we were overrun with development. That was my understanding.
So look, maybe I'm wrong. It seems that, we've never debated this long over a budget before in the 16 years that I've been here. It seems that, that the council, and I may be wrong, and the mayor thinks that some of these positions may be superfluous. What if we, I'm just throwing it out there now, what if we take whatever the amount is for these positions that we are currently operating without, and do some of the things those ladies over there were talking about, to retain some of our employees with that money? And we go with the police, we, we still move forward with the three police officers? I mean, I'm sorry, two police, oh, that's just long, so I'm, plus I ain't had no sleep, but we've moved forward with the two police officers, and we again do away with some of the superfluous, perceived superfluous employee, and move forward with some of the ideas that those women had. Not only those women, but the other women who stood and spoke as well.
Yeah, and the other thing I heard our mayor say at the night of that work session, we are doing a salary study, and he said, "Tim, you need to go find the money, take care of these lower people, and we will do that." Nobody has a greater desire to pay public safety more than I do. I've got a son that's a fireman, not in this city. He's a fireman in Douglas County. They do not make enough money. They work 24 hours on, 48 off. These police see things that nobody should have to see in a, in a once-in-a-lifetime, much less every week. And so, but that was a direction we were given, and so we're going to look at our salaries and compare them to everyone. Faith is working toward a, the same benefit plan at less cost. I know she met with a consultant the day on that, and the plan was, and this is what we talked about in the spring work session, to come back to you, to show that savings and take that money, and hopefully put it back in these gentleman's pocket. So that's the plan. It was not to take anything away from them, but it was to find inefficiencies in that, in some of our benefits, and then put that money back in their pocket if you choose to approve that at the time. But again, as far as these, these positions, again, for instance, code enforcement, there's no plan to fill that person. We don't think we're going to need it. We put it in the budget in case our economy booms. And again, the purchasing agent will save us money. We need more scrutiny on some of these minor purchases, so.
Can we? Okay, I understand what you're saying, but you know, I also know that a lot of this personnel stuff, and I guess we can have an executive committee next month and discuss some of it on personnel?
I don't. Chuck's going to have to address that.
We can have an executive session to discuss, you know, hiring, but whether or not to allow for it as a matter of budget, budgeting, I don't think would be something that would be appropriate for executive session.
I didn't say budget. I didn't mean budgeting-wise, I'm just as far as actually hiring on this situation.
At least a portion of that process can be done in executive session.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just to make sure that this budget includes also the, the water rate increase of 3%, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes? Number nine, Board Appointments, Carrollton Area Convention Center and Visitors Bureau, two people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The CVV is a board that is oversees the use of our hotel motel tax in order to bring tourists into this city. And there's a specific requirement that the board be structured and made of certain people from different areas of the city. Some have to be from, again, from actually the motel and hotel industry. There are two people up for reappointment, and both would like to be, would like to serve again, and the board itself has recommended that they be reappointed, and that is the current board chairperson, Jackie Pate, and then the McIntosh Park manager, Darrell Johnson. So if you so choose, they, they are willing to serve for an additional term.
Was there any comment on this, please? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept? Mr. Pate and Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to accept, Mr. Pate and Mr. Johnson, Ms. Pate.
Ms. Pate, excuse me, Ms. Pate.
To the Carrollton Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand for the reappointment. Motion carries. No opposed. Well, number seven, see how the mayor and council have already made comments, it's up to you.
I just want to thank the staff for their hard work on this budget, and thank our public safety people. There were some very difficult incidences that occurred in the last few days that I won't specifically talk about, but again, I want to thank our police and fire for working those events, and I know they're very traumatic, so thank you.
Is there anything else? This motion's adjourned.